Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, January 12, 2021. Meeting announcements, council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. All meetings will be live streamed on the city channel Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess, Mr. Coghill, here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. LaBelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain for a moment of silence afterwards. And can I just say during the moment of silence, we, I should have mentioned last week, the passing of Governor Thornburg. And there were a lot of people that, and a lot of things that happened last week. So let's keep that also in a moment of silence. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That brings us on to our next order of business, which is proclamations. We have one to be read into the record. Councilman O'Connor, Councilman O'Connor.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1050. Now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh, as hereby recognizing Kimmen Ron and Jenny Joseph for 50 years of dedicated commitment to the operation of Joseph's Coffee House and to the Greenfield community and congratulates Ron and Jenny Joseph for their professional and personal legacy of integrity and wishes them all the best in their retirement.
Have a motion and a second.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Any, just, oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion, Councilman O'Connor?
Uh, no, thank you, Madam President. Just a great business that we were supposed to have something for a couple of months ago, but obviously we couldn't. So we're mailing it to them. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. And next order of business is public comment. And I would like to, I don't think, do we have anybody registered?
We don't have anybody registered this morning.
So anyway, so seeing no registered speakers, we'll move on to the next order of business, which is the presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation. Councilman Burgess?
He's not on yet.
Okay, Madam Clerk, some papers?
No, no new papers. Maybe one of the, one of the other members want to present for him?
Yeah, no new papers, Madam President.
Yes, please, thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Morning.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1041, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Energy Development Authority's COVID-19 Restart Grant for the Installation of Electric Vehicle Charging Stations at the Second Avenue Parking Lot and Further Providing for an Agreement and Expenditures Not to Exceed $189,000 for this stated purpose.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President?
Thank you, good morning, Councilwoman.
Morning.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1042, Resolution Authorizing a Corporation Agreement Providing for the Transfer of Funds Not to Exceed $2,803,480 to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the Purchase and Leasing of Vehicles, Equipment, and Accessories for Use by City of Pittsburgh Departments. Bill Number 1049, Resolution to Grant the Legally Allowable Single Six-Month Extension to Inclusionary Housing Interplanning Overlay District as per the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Code Article III, Overlay Zoning Districts, Chapter 907, Development Overlay Districts. Time Limit has been filed by the Department of City Planning. Time Limit, expiry date of the district reference in Section 90702K, known as IPod 6 Lawrenceville, originally set by code for January 25, 2021, and shall be extended by six months to July 25, 2021.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross. Yes, thank you, Madam President. I motion to waive the waiver of Rule 8 so that this bill, 1049, can appear on tomorrow's standing committee.
Back it.
Second, any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman Gross, for doing a great job leading that and making sure it got on today. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilwoman LaBelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Not on yet, someone would.
I believe no new papers, Madam President.
Thank you.
No, there are papers.
There's a waiver for Rule 8.
Oh, sorry, okay.
There are papers.
Councilman LaBelle presents Bill Number 1043, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of the City of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency Ratified by Council on March 17, 2020, to Extend the Effectiveness of the Declaration for 36 Additional Days, thereby making the Declaration Effective until February 16, 2021, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus. Bill Number 1044, Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh City Code Title I Administrative Article VIII Procedures by Adding a New Chapter 166, Donation of City Personal Property, to Create a Policy for the Donation of City-Owned Personal Property. Bill Number 1045, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Accept a Donation from Workscape Inc. of $5,000 for Capital Investment for the Amon Recreation Center Rec. Tech Remodel.
And can we have a motion, Councilman O'Connor, to waive?
On 1043.
1043, yes.
Yes.
We have a second. Any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
And the bill will appear on tomorrow's standing committee agenda. Is that the one for today?
Best to be, best to be passed on the final action today.
Okay, that's the emergency declaration, okay.
Yes.
Okay, and now can I have Councilman O'Connor doing double duty, Chair of Public Safety Services?
No new papers, Madam President, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
No, no papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman, good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman, good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1046, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 772 of 2016, effective January 1, 2017, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2017 Capital Budget and the 2017 CBG Program, approving the 2017 through 2022 Capital Improvement Program, so as to rename an organization at a fiscal conduit and authorize a subsequent agreement. Bill Number 1047, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863 of 2018, effective January 1, 2019, as amended, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capital Budget and the 2019 CBG Program and the 2019 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program, so as to rename an organization at a fiscal conduit and authorize a subsequent agreement. Bill Number 1048, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title XI of the Code of Ordinances that certain site known as Mellon Park, located in Point Breeze in the 7th and 14th Wards in the city. The city is the owner of this property. There has been no objection to the nomination.
Thank you, and myself, Chair of Hearings, I have no papers. When we want unfinished businesses, are there any unfinished business before council?
Madam President?
This is the first time I ever had one. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Well, it's, I guess, maybe more of a point of order. Do we need to call for the public hearing for the historic designation of Mellon Park? What has that already been called for?
Can we do that after the meeting? At motions and resolutions?
Absolutely, I'm happy to do that later. I'm just wondering if it has already been called for.
I don't know, has it come, uh, Madam Clerk?
No, it needs to be held for a public hearing.
Okay.
Call for it at standing committee?
Right. General, may I?
Yes.
Please.
Yeah, generally, we call for those when it comes up for consideration on the first Wednesday.
Thank you.
After, after introduction.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. That clarity, and thank you, Councilwoman and Madam Clerk. Councilman LaBelle, Committee on Finance and Law. I'm sorry, is there any other, any other unfinished business? Seeing none, we'll move on to the reports of committee for final action. Councilman LaBelle. And can we have Councilman O'Connor for Councilman LaBelle?
Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry, I tried to flip the thing.
It's so confusing doing it on this, even as techie as most of you are, it's really confusing. I apologize. Madam Clerk?
Councilman LaBelle presents Bill Number 1037, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for January 6, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1018, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Bureau of Neighborhood Empowerment to Execute Relevant Agreement to Receive Grant Funding from the Human Foundation to Support the Imagination Library Program for the City, through the Dollywood Foundation, providing for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed $50,000.
Thank you, you've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, all in favor of the passage, the bills are not ready for final action, all in favor of the passage, will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Yes.
Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. LaBelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. Councilman Corio Connor, Committee on Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1038, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for December 6, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1019, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Directing the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement and/or contracts with Cultural Humility and Equity Collaborative LLC for the purpose of creating a cross-cultural training for public safety officials to better bridge between public safety officials and members of our immigrant, refugee, and international communities in an amount not to exceed $50,000, subject to appropriations.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final passage, all in favor of the, all in favor of the passage, will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. LaBelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman, good morning.
Good morning.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 1039, Report of the, Report of the Committee on Public Works for January 6, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1027, Ordinance Amending the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title IV, Public Places and Property, Article I, Public Right-of-Way, Chapter 416, Obstructions, Approval Process for Sidewalk Cafe, including permits and fees to further extend the effectiveness of certain temporary expedited measures for the City of Pittsburgh Sidewalk Cafe Permit Application Process through April 15, 2021. Twenty-eight, Resolution Amending Resolution 37 of 2020 to allow for multiple agreements as necessary to authorize certain easements in connection with the construction of Duquesne Light Company's new Riaise Electric Substation and the installation of an underground electrical system to connect the substation to the existing electrical distribution system for the surrounding area.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action, all in favor of the passage of, aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. LaBelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 1040, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for January 6, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 635, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for 1501 PN Avenue. Bill Number 1030, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Executing an Administrative Order on Consent with the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency in order to implement requirements associated with the NPDES storm water permit.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action, all in favor of the passage of, aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. LaBelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions, and I have a few meeting announcements first, and then we'll get to Mr. Councilman LaBelle's bill and to other members' comments. Council will hold, council will hold a briefing this afternoon with sessions at 1:00 and 2:00 p.m. to discuss the, the incurring of non-electoral debt through the issuance of a series of general obligation bonds as it relates to Council Bill 2021-1031. Tomorrow, Wednesday, January 13, council will hold their standing committee, our standing committee meetings at 10:00 a.m., and will be chaired by Councilman LaBelle. To register to speak at tomorrow's council meetings, please fill out the signup form in its entirety on this council, on the council meetings webpage at PittsburghPA.gov/Clark/council-meetings/ /council-meetings. I'm gonna say that again, PittsburghPA.gov/Clark/council-meetings, with a S. Registration closes promptly at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. You may also register by calling the City Clerk's office at 412-255-2138. And Councilman LaBelle, we have your bill for the emergency declaration.
Yes, Bill 1043, Madam President?
Yes. Madam Clerk, did you want to read the bill again?
Yes, Bill 1043, Resolution Providing for Further Renewal by the Council of the City of a Declaration of Disaster Emergency Ratified by Council on March 17, 2020, to Extend the Effectiveness of the Declaration for 36 Additional Days, thereby making the Declaration Effective until February 16, 2021, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus.
Can we have a motion and a second? Motion to approve in a second?
So moved?
Second.
And all in favor? Any discussion?
We'll, we'll need a roll call vote.
Any discussion? Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any discussion? Seeing none, um, have a, have a vote, a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Sorry, was that me?
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. LaBelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills have received the legally required number of votes is finally passed. And now we'll move on to council members for motions and resolutions. Is there anything for members?
Madam Clerk, or Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Thank you. So I'm really not even sure how or where to begin. The state of affairs in, in the greatest nation on this earth is at probably as most tenable a situation as we have ever experienced in our lifetimes. And I, for one, have found it impossible to pull myself away from the coverage on it. I haven't turned the TV off since last Wednesday, when we exited our meeting. And like much of the nation, and I'm sure much of our constituency is following it minute by minute as, as it unfolds. To bring it full circle to home, to where we are, we know that there are clearly risks involved in the next seven to 10 days and maybe beyond, being that we are the state of Pennsylvania, clearly a swing state, Allegheny County, city of Pittsburgh, in a large pocket of Democratic votes. Okay.
Any other questions?
I just want to send the best to leadership that will guide us through these incredibly, the leadership that have chosen to respect their oaths of office, to lead us through these incredibly difficult times. I send the best to our Public Safety Director, our Public Safety Department, the administration, and everyone charged with keeping us safe during this very challenging and difficult and unprecedented time. I don't know that I have ever been more shaken in my entire adult life by the, the actions of some that would desecrate the very heart and soul of democracy here in the United States. And am oversteatingly ashamed of those who have chosen not to come out and resoundly condemn with no, no reservation what a stain these days are on the history of this nation. And I, I just implore everyone to please remain calm and to respect this nation and what we stand for, who and what we stand for. And to be leaders and to remain strong in, in these terribly unprecedented times. So I wish all the best to those that are in place to protect us. And we support their efforts and, and implore people to remain calm and, and keep our city safe. And allow for the the peaceful transfer of power, which has been a tradition in this nation from the, the, the birth of this nation. And thank you for letting me say that.
Thank you, Councilman, any other members?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, on a personal note, I am delighted to see Reverend Raphael Warnock and John Osloff win the Georgia Senators' race, the first African-American
Yeah.
Senator and the first Jewish Senator. Reverend Warnock's election was particularly gratifying to me. He passes the Ebenezer Baptist Church, Dr. King's church, his church, my church are in the same national fellowship. A close friend of mine who recently passed was an assistant at Ebenezer, who pastored here, left Pittsburgh to become assistant at Ebenezer, and then pastored West Turner Street in Atlanta, passed fairly recently. My, my good friend who's somewhere in heaven, smiling Reverend Toussaint King Hill, who was actually a cousin of, of Kings and my connection to that church and to that congregation. I think that we are seeing the beginning of the end. You see, what we're really seeing is what happens when white racism loses and is confronted and loses. You have to understand, when you look at the election, the majority of white people in this country voted for Donald Trump. The majority of white people in this country voted for Donald Trump. The majority, the majority of white people in this country voted for Donald Trump, which says for the majority of those people, race is not, doesn't mean that they're racist, it just means that race is not the determining factor. We have for years had lynchings in the South, but no uprising because that was black people. We've had now, you know, the killings of innocent black people, and it's been raised to historic levels. And when we start to talk about now, it's not by accident, the election of an African-American senator, and then the, if you look at those images with the Confederate flag and you look at the actions of the Capitol Police and you just look at the images from when the block last matters, peaceful march on Washington and look at how they were different. This sin of racism, which our country has been built on, we are in the process now of dismantling it. I have done my best here locally to do that, to call it out when I've seen it. I have been the victim of it, of course, and I have called it out. And we'll continue to call it out when I see it. I do not want this country just to heal, I want it to be healthy. The absence of violence, that racist underbelly has always been there, active, discriminatory in every part of our country. That racist scab is being pulled off, and what you're seeing now is that, that minority of our country, because we're becoming now, so what you're seeing now in the future, you know, the, the kids coming up, my students, my children, their children, are the most diverse generation in history. You're, you're going to see diversity, right? You're, you're going, this, this is the last gasp of white supremacy in our country. That's what you're seeing. You're seeing the end of that. Now, you know, people my age, you know, we, we, you know, we still have our own issues that we have to deal with. We do not always live up to the greatest ideals of this country, but this is a great country. And so as much as I hate to see this, in my mind, my prophetic eye, it is, it is in, not good, but it is, at least we are being honest about where we are as a country. You know, we have been lynching, we lynch black people until the 60s, and we have this illusion that that kind of ugliness has gone away. It, it never went away, it just went underground. Now we can begin the hard work of finally exercising it, surgically removing it. And so I, I agree with, with Councilman Kraus, he's right, we call for peace, we, we call for leadership, that's number one. Two, to, we do not want violence, but then there, but that's not enough. That's not enough. That's not enough. The problem this all revolves around is the hidden acceptance, promotion of racism in this country. And so we have been, I think, probably one of the most progressive councils in our city, I mean, in our country. We have passed, you know, all of this legislation to deal with this issue. And now we have to go one step further, right? We have to continue to make sure that there is racial equity in every single decision we make. That's our, that's our future because it is insidious. It is structural. It is everywhere. And, you know, it is sad, but it is not surprising. Those of us who are black, we have lived with this our lives. That is come, you know, to, to, to show the country in such visual, you know, visual in such visual, visceral, I'm not saying the right word, visual, visual ways, I think can be helpful as long as we act to it right and see what we see. You're seeing the end. And, and, and as much as they were anti-black, they were also anti-Jewish. My heart just turned. When I saw some of the T shirts and the hateful imagery, you know, they were anti-Jewish. They were anti-black and probably at their core anti-woman. So we go for it. These are hard times, but I, I believe this, this needed to happen for us to truly see where we are at as a nation. We are, we have, we have, we have not always lived up to our, our goals of life, liberty, pursuit of happiness for everybody. And so now we go to fix it. I am confident as Obama in his, you know, his book, his book talks about, you know, he's two oh five. It is, my hope is in my children and grandchildren, right? They will be, were diverse. They won't carry the scars. They won't hopefully have those experiences that I've had. Where I've had, you know, where I have had to deal with in every place in my life openly hostile hostilities, not because of my intelligence, not because of my stances, only because of the color of my skin. Hopefully, my, my sons and daughters and grandchildren yet to be born will have to experience that open nasty racism, right? I've gotten hate letters in seminary. I've had, you know, I've had to deal with that on every place I've ever been in my entire life. I've had people come against me, not because of our giftedness, only because of my race. And, and, and so that's where we're at as a country, and we need to be honest about where we're at. This was not a one off. This was not an aberration. This is America. This is who we are. Now we have to be better than that. We can be better than that, but it means to be honest about where we are. So that when we when we decide to go after black people without evidence, we are part of this too. So let's, let's, let's be really honest and let's, so let's not do that anymore as a, as a council, as a city, as a country. Let's realize that our actions, our statements, this is incredibly polarized country, has been. But, 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 you know, polarizing is great, right? Because we went from a country where, you know, lynching black people, discriminating against black people was open, honest and done all the time. Now, at least there's a public acknowledgement that this isn't right. We should not do this. And we should not do this. So we have to get through this time, right? This, this, this time. And, you know, I did everything I could to, to help the president win and I'm grateful for the new block, the, 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 the black people voting in such numbers that propelled him to victory both in the primary and the general and now the two senators. But now, and I've thought a lot about this, right? I thought a lot about this. In our own space now, we must do everything we can to make sure that we are elevating the best idea of our country. And then where we can to elevate African Americans in our city and our state and in our country based on their abilities and gifts. And it's hard, right? It's, it's really hard to do that. I get it. It's hard. But that is, that, 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 it's more than our country healing. Our country and our city must be healthy. We have, we have led the way as council in terms of our, our legislation. And I call for us to continue to do that, that, that it will be hard. It will be hard to disproportionately put money in black communities. It will be disproportionately hard for us to celebrate African American leadership. It will be very hard for us to do these things. I know that. You know, I, I know it's hard. But that's what will make this country allow it to live up to the ideas of which it professes. And I, you know, I've thought about this a lot. And that's, that's what I think. Now, I probably won't say that again. Maybe I will at some point. I say I will, I probably will. That's what we must do. We can't look at this and say, oh, this is someone else. No, we have to be part of the solution. Gandhi says you have to be part of the change you want to make. And I, and that's, and we have been. So let's continue to emphasize that as we see this craziness in our country. And I think you, I think you're right, Councilman Kraus. It is, it's ugly. And, you know, and we're prayerful that no one, there's no more hurt. There's no more, you know, more, more death. You know, our city is, you know, with death threats and, and our city and our capital, it's ugly. I'm simply saying it's been ugly for black people though, for many, 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 many years. Right? I just don't talk about it. I don't talk about the phone calls that I get. Even now, I get nasty, ugly phone calls calling me outside my name. I just don't talk about it. Sometimes I'll tell a sergeant of arms, but I don't all the time. You know, it, that ugliness, that ugly racism, that sin of our country is real. We saw it. Now we have to every day commit ourselves in our small way to exercising it from our statements, from our actions, from our city, from our county, from our state and from our country. Yeah. So that, that, it, it, we got it. We can't just heal. We have to be healthy and I'm, you know, my children, grandchildren won't, they, they will see a better day because the, the, the demographics are changing, right? We're becoming the most diverse country that, that this white supremacy is a losing battle. They will lose. They cannot win this battle. It will, it will win. They will lose. The numbers won't support them. Demographics are changing. They can't win. And so what I think you're seeing is the beginning of the end of that secret ugly stain that has been with our country from its inception. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Burgess. Any other members? Any other members? Okay, seeing that, I'm just going to say that I think you and Councilman Kraus hit on a lot of important things, but I think it was difficult for everyone to watch what happened this week, especially those of us who do love our country, and many of us do. I think it's, it's one of the reasons we're counting on Joe Biden to come and do what, what he said he would do when he ran, that he would be a uniter. And so we're counting on that and hoping that when he gets in, they'll have the chance to actually unite this country. And I think we can, I think we have to acknowledge the racism that exists. I think we have to acknowledge some of the hate and anger that exists. But I think for the most part, there were a lot of people, both Republicans and Democrats who denounced what happened. And I think that we have to acknowledge that and know that a lot of people didn't like that. People love their country. They respect the Capitol. And they want to see things happen the legal way, legal way. They want to go about things legally and didn't, didn't like seeing what they saw. So I do want to say that sometimes people can put us being American before the party. And I think that's what we all need to do right now. I think we need to talk, work together with those who want to work together to do the things that we need to do just to stop the racism, to to help here and heal this country in, in ways that we have not done before. Because I do fear what's happening and I do fear what's going to happen to, to this country and, and the city of Pittsburgh in the next coming weeks, but in, in the coming years. So I, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to try to remain calm, talk to people about staying calm, thanking our law enforcement officials who, and those who are protecting us. I want to say that I'm glad to see Director Hystrick at the helm because he has a vast amount of knowledge, former FBI agent, but we also have, are very fortunate to have the Madam Clerk and our Sergeant at Arms who brought some things to our attention this week. You'll be getting an updated letter from us today. But I, I just want to say that moving forward, I think we need to remain calm and those of us who love this country need to speak up more in ways that are not attacking, but trying to come from a place where we're changing hearts and minds and, and understanding where other people and what their fears are and, and why people are so afraid of some of the changes coming up. And I think that that's what we need to do as leaders. We need to be uniters. We need to be, we need to calm people down. And we need to validate that some people have legitimate concerns and some people just have hate. And those who have hate, that's not up to me to work on. That's up to a higher power. But for me, I'm going to work on the people and work with the people who want to see change in our country. And, and I'm looking forward to working with our members to continue to do some of the great things that we've been doing. Anything else from members? With that said, can I have a motion to excuse any absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.